We'll call the October 22 county board to session and every good right to put the lead.
(inaudible) All present, 21. A motion to present the agenda, some of them. Motion by Mark Second and by Chuck. All in favor say aye. We're going to move the resolution 2013-60 to the top of the list. This is a proclamation designating the month of October 2013 as Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas held each October since 1988 and with roots dating back to 1945, National Disability Employment Awareness Month is the national campaign that raises awareness about disability employment issues and celebrates many and varied contributions of America's worker with disabilities. And whereas the theme of this N-D-E-A-M is because we are equal to the task and Door County's theme is working around the door, and whereas the people with disabilities are integral contributing productive and valuable citizens of Door County, Wisconsin, and whereas workplaces welcoming the talents of all the people, including people with disabilities, are a crucial part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas that cooperation endeavors such as the Door County Department of Human Services partnership with Wisconsin Division of Vocals Rehabilitation will reinforce the values and talents that people with disabilities add to our workforce and communities and affirm Door County's commitment to an inclusive community, now therefore be resolved that the Door County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim October 2013 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that in so doing, the Door County Board of Supervisors calls upon employers, schools, and other community organizations in Door County, Wisconsin to observe this month with appropriation programs and activities and to advance its important message that because we are equal to the task throughout the year. I'd like to have a motion to approve this resolution. You, the second, by Ben. All in favor say aye. Opposed, that's passed. Call Cindy up here now to explain this and actually I was supposed to call her before I read this, but anyway Cindy's in charge now.
I like the sound of that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and our wonderful audience out there. This is an absolute pleasure to be here, have all of you here with us to celebrate this great month acknowledging people with disabilities and working in our community. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Cindy Zellner-Ailers. I am the program coordinator at the Department of Human Services for people with disabilities as well as elderly and people with physical disabilities. So thank you very much for coming and hopefully you're going to meet some of the folks in the back of the room, ladies and gentlemen. But I just really am honored to be in front of you today and to be, last year at this time, we were celebrating with probably half the size of employers in the back of the room that are your constituents and businesses that support Door County, but most importantly, people with disabilities who are gainfully employed in our community and contributing. So thank you very much. We have an agenda today and for those of you who haven't received it, there are some extra copies in the back, but we're going to move this process through in about a half hour at the very most. But again, I want to thank everybody for coming and helping us celebrate. For those of you who are familiar with our system downstairs at the Department of Human Services, we've worked really, really hard over the last years to help people with disabilities to be as integrated and a part of our community as possible. And we've done that in lieu of supporting people in their own apartments, we've done that in lieu of helping people have natural supports and connections and friendships and joining civic groups and organizations in our community. So we really promote the idea of full inclusion and people that are your neighbors and friends and family regardless of whether or not they have a disability, that we build a community that is whole. And I look at the world of work as still an area that we still have a lot of work and energy that needs to be put forward so that when you go to work every day, that you're working side by side with people who have challenges as well as people who don't. And that kind of building a sense of community and sense of wholeness continues to grow and aspire to, so that we really are proud as citizens of Door County about that concept of full inclusion. So what I'd like to do today is introduce Anna Egabrech and Scott Schlecker who are with the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. They are a partner in this idea of complete inclusion in our workforce. In addition to the Division of Voc Rehab, we also have, we are Hope, which many of you in the audience would remember them as Women's Employment Project. They are a partner in how we brought this event to take place today and they are also a key player in helping support people with disabilities in the community, as well as NEW Curative. The county has a contract with that organization out of Green Bay and they provide satellite services up here in Door County and they too have a key piece in that role of job coaching and supporting people with disabilities in the community. So those are our partner agencies that are represented here today. And I'd ask Anna to come up and kind of lead us through what our agenda is going to look like. What we wanted to do folks is we wanted to highlight, it was our idea to do around the door this year. Remember last year we highlighted a few communities. This year we are highlighting community businesses all around the peninsula. And so I'd like Anna to lead us in giving you a little bit more history about National Employ People with Disabilities Month and then we will do the recognition of the employers here in Door County. So with that, Anna?
Good morning, everyone. I hope you can see me behind this podium. I'm on tiptoe right now. I am the district director for DVR here in Northeast Wisconsin. DVR stands for the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. We've been around for decades and we provide services locally in almost every county in the state of Wisconsin. In recognition of National Disability and Employment Awareness Month, we call it ENDING. This has been going on for many years and we're really happy to be able to be here this morning with all of you. In October, we celebrate National Disability Employment Awareness Month. It's celebrated annually across the country and we are proud to recognize and celebrate the many varied contributions of workers with disabilities and the businesses that invest in them. The theme for the, or the national theme for this year's National Disability Employment Awareness Month is we are equal to the task. Here in Door County, they developed a personalized theme which I think is perfect. It's called Working Around the Door. So I'll share some statistics with all of you and then what I'd like to do is have my colleague Scott Schlicker come up to present that information. As an agency, DVR and our partners have provided the services and supports that people with disabilities need to achieve their employment goal and we have helped Wisconsin businesses to diversify their workforce by including individuals with disabilities. In Door County, DVR works closely with the Door County Department of Human Services, Northeast Wisconsin Curative, and we are Hope Inc. We have the common goal of providing services and supports to individuals with disabilities that need to work and live independently in their communities. And I just want to share a snapshot of the economic impact of the work that we've performed in the last federal fiscal year. In the last 12 months in just this immediate area of the state, we, meaning DVR and the partners I just recognized, assisted 16 individuals to achieve their employment goals. So that's a 12-month period. The cost of providing DVR services to these individuals was over $300,000, just a little over. Their estimated, I'm sorry, their cost of services was $154,000. Their annual earnings is over $300,000 per year. So that's a 200% return on investment for the services that we provided. The statewide return on investment for DVR consumers is just as impressive. During that same time period, DVR assisted over 3,800 individuals with disabilities statewide to achieve their employment goals. The cost of providing services to those individuals was $32.2 million statewide. Their estimated annual earnings was $66.3 million, more than double the taxpayer investment in their services. So the wages these individuals are earning are going directly back into the communities where they live and work. It has an economic impact locally as well as statewide when they are taxpaying independent members of their community. It's my pleasure to present Scott Schlicker. I want him to share the businesses we're recognizing today and working around the door.
Thank you, Anna. My name is Scott Schlicker. My role is a business services consultant and I'm tasked with bridging the gap between DVR and the business community and service organizations in a role of education to help find more jobs for people, help get more people retained, and also to spread the word about DVR. Also looking at training gaps and things like that, working very closely in collaboration with our partners that we're also recognizing today. We chose the theme of Working Around the Door because I know how integral each community is to the success of making Door County a success economically as a whole. It's not just one particular town. So what we did, usually there's one award for an outstanding employer. We decided everybody deserved the governor's award. So we are going to present each business recognized today with the governor's award rather than just recognizing one. So I would like to start the awards presentation first by recognizing Zion Methodist Church in Fish Creek. Jane Summer is the pastor and Joe Desatell is working there. Joe is in the process of forming his own independent business.
Wow.
This employment for Joe will help him complete his business plan and open his own cleaning business. I'd like to next recognize the Blacksmith Inn in Bailey's Harbor. Thank you. The Blacksmith Inn has worked with people with disabilities for a long time and Joan and Brian Holliday have been just great supporters. I would like to recognize the Shoreline Restaurant.
(laughing).
Mike and Mary Meade have all spent a long time supporters of employing people with disabilities and Michael Wozniewski is doing a great job there. Next is Winkies. Winkies has also been a very long-term employer of helping people with disabilities and also has been an integral part in the Let's Get to Work grant, which is a transition program for high school students to get them into long-term independent community employment and they have been an integral part of working with that program as well. I'd like to recognize the Square Rigor Lodge.
(applause).
Elizabeth had two people working over the summer and has over the years employed people in our housekeeping staff with disabilities and they've done a great job. Next I'd like to recognize Wanda Jeans. Wanda has three people working with her now and yesterday, as of yesterday, four. And again, has been a very long-term time supporter. Thank you.
(applause).
She's proud.
Next is the Logged On Restaurant in Egg Harbor. Kim and Steve Bell are here. Wayne and Diane Lautenbach are owners of the restaurant as well as Steve and Kim. Wayne Rathie has been working there this summer and has survived coming into the busiest time of the year with flying colors as a dishwasher and came in right in the thick of it and picked it up and just ran with it and has done an absolutely astonishing job. Our next business is Marchand's. And nobody is here to represent them, but we want to thank them. They've also been a long-time supporter. You see a common theme here. Many of these people have been working with us for a long time because they see the benefit of employing people with disabilities and how much it reduces their stress not worrying if somebody has to come to work, if they have a smile on their face, if they're going to complain. And there's a common theme also, I didn't read all the remarks, but about the individuals, their own comments. "I'm happy to come to work. I love my job. I love coming here every day." And we find that very, very, a common theme in employing people with disabilities is just the gratitude that is present of the people who are employed. People are just very glad to have a job and work. I would like to recognize Shopko. This is Lori Brockman, the manager, and Kenny Gow and Andrew Stewart. Shopko faces a little different challenge in the corporate realm of department stores. Hiring is all done corporately, so most of the time you have to get through many doors to get beyond that protocol. And Lori has done that and has been able to bring people on without that protocol and again has been a long-time supporter. So I want to thank everybody today. This is a great day. We at DVR, this and our partners, this is a day where we get to see what people have done for us and that's most important. We have a very gratifying job that we get to make a living and make a difference. And our goal is to, with our collaboration with our partners, is to help people get jobs, keep jobs, and to get better jobs. So thank you all, thanks for your time this morning.
Cindy, you thought we were forward or?
Yeah.
I got this proclamation I could give you.
Okay.
Well, I think it's Cindy. Do you have any more or is this it?
No, my challenge, my closing remarks are basically just a challenge to all of you as county board supervisors. This is a wonderful turnout, celebrating what Door County has to offer around supportive employment for people with disabilities. And I'm hoping next year, when I'm here to celebrate October again with you, that we fill the room all the more. And that comes from your work as county board supervisors, supporting the work that we all do, but more importantly, your work in communication out in the community about what a difference supportive employment and integrated employment makes in the county of Door. So thank you all very much for your time today and good luck with the rest of your business.
Thank you, Cindy. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Everybody's welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you can do what you want. We got to taste Cindy's bakery. Thank you. Call the county board back in session. First item that we have is the correspondence. In your packet are the correspondence of the Oniside Fund Balance and also a couple letters from the county mutual saying that Door County did a really good job last year in not having a lot of losses insurance-wise. Okay, next is public comment. Does anybody from the public like to speak? Going once. I guess not, so we won't have any supervisors' response. Special reports, administrative monthly report. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of items of note, this month, the administrative manual, you'll be taking that up later on in the agenda, but as you all recall, this has been with us now for about a month. We've gone to a couple of department head meetings and I think hit just about every one of our standing committee meetings with this document and went through various amendments. I'd like to take a moment to thank our human resources director, Handy. Kelly, can you please stand? This was a monumental effort that she put forward on this and I would encourage you all to thank her for the effort. Hopefully later on today we'll approve this item. Thank you, Kelly. The next item is the compensation study. The compensation study, a bunch of us, namely the corp counsel, finance director, human resources director, and myself, spent yesterday at Whipflee, that's the consultant that we have doing the compensation study. We've discovered that we are a little bit out of market. The estimates are somewhere between 115% roughly above the market. We'll be talking more about that next Wednesday, October 30th, at a special meeting of the administrative committee to hear the first presentation on that item. I'm not sure what will happen after administrative committee, but we've scheduled it for December 10th at the full county board. So we'll see where it goes in between there. I'm not sure if the chairman is planning on sending this to, out to the standing committees. I think we'll take that up next Wednesday. That's an update on the compensation study. Finally, we've had significant progress in the area of intergovernmental relations this past month. On October 14th, we had a visit from Governor Walker's Director of Legislative and Local Affairs at the DCEDC. I'm looking at the two members that serve on that group, Supervisor Enigle and Supervisor Firestein, on the visit from Cindy Polesin. This is the, as I said, governor's director of legislative and local affairs. Great meeting, lots of good ideas were shared with her. One of significant note is to, hopefully the governor may consider this, is to allow any contributions to groups like the Economic Development Corporation to be above the levy cap. That may spur economic development and job creation across the state. We'll see where that idea goes. There were several others and hopefully this is the first of many visits by Governor Walker's staff and hopefully the governor. Another item that occurred recently, on Tuesday, October 15th, we had a visit from DNR Secretary Kathy Stepp. Of significant note, I'd like to thank the conservationists in our soil and water department, Greg Colter, I always say his name wrong, Greg Colters, thank you, Brian Forrest and Dale Conkel, did an outstanding job of presenting us well in describing the karst topography that we live in and the uniqueness that is Door County. And a thank you to the chairman and the vice chair and supervisors, I'm looking right at you, Bran and Mulliken for joining us on that important visit. Hopefully this is the first of many visits by the DNR. Of note, she recognizes the uniqueness of us and the fact that sometimes the rules that exist statewide might need to be implemented a little differently here in Door County because of our subsoils and the karst topography. So we'll see. This is hopefully the first of many visits by the DNR. That's what I have as an update. I could go on for another two hours, but sensing I shouldn't do that. I'm getting a no. All right, then I'll stop. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd, 26th rather. Motion by Biz, seconded by Richard Haynes. Are there any corrections or additions? All in favor say aye. Opposed, that is passed. The first resolution we have is a non-commercial hanger site truck. Do you want to handle that promotion?
Yes. I guess first I move to approve resolution number 2013-61.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Ben.
I would advise that this is a standard lease that we do for 10 years with renewal. The right of first refusal was brought before our committee and we saw no reason for the committee to move forward on purchase of it. So we support the site lease agreement for Robert Wubin and building number 46.
Okay. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed, that is passed. We got to find the time to use this voter board yet before the day is over here. Go ahead Chuck on retention of the Design Professional Kana Island Preservation.
I guess I'll pass that on to Supervisor Verley who was standing in for me as I was unable to.
Biz, you want to make a motion and then we'll get seconded and then we'll discuss it?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we adopt that resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chuck. Okay, go ahead Biz.
Eric.
He can do a better job than I can.
Thanks Biz. Yeah, we had a very productive search, I guess, for our design professional team. We had a committee that met for two or three months as we were going through screening qualifications and we basically got things down to the architect engineering firm that worked on the Kana Island Historic Preservation Report, Historic Structures Report that was done four years ago and then River Architects was our other top candidate and we're recommending hiring river architects basically because of the cost difference, about 43,000 difference between those two proposals and they were both very well qualified and very capable of doing the design work for the restoration work that will be tackled over the next couple of years out at Kana Island. You may recall last month we had the first donation from the Maritime Museum of 100,000 to put towards hiring the architectural firm to do the design for all the restoration work that will be done in the next couple of years.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd, 26th rather. Motion by Biz, seconded by Richard Haynes. Are there any corrections or additions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That is passed. The first resolution we have is a non-commercial hanger site. Chuck, you want to handle that, the motion and?
Yes. I guess first I move to approve resolution number 2013-61.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Ben. Okay.
I would advise that this is a standard lease that we do for 10 years with renewal. The right of first refusal was brought before our committee and we saw no reason for the committee to move forward on purchase of it. So, we support the site lease agreement for Robert Wubin and building number 46.
Okay. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? That is passed. You got to find the time to use this voter board yet before the day is over here. Go ahead, Chuck, on retention of the design professional Kana Island preservation.
I guess I'll, I'll pass that on to Supervisor Verley, who was standing in for me as I was unable to.
Okay. Biz, you want to make a motion and then we'll get seconded and then we'll discuss it?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we adopt that resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chuck. Okay, go ahead, Biz.
Gary.
He can do, Gary do a better job than I can.
Thanks, Biz. Yeah, we had a very productive search, I guess, for our design professional team. We had a committee that met for two or three months as we were going through screening qualifications and we basically got things down to the architect engineering firm that worked on the Kana Island historic preservation report, historic structures report that was done four years ago. And then River Architects was our other top candidate and we're recommending hiring River Architects basically because of the cost difference, about 43,000 difference between those two proposals. And they were both very well qualified and very capable of doing the design work for the restoration work that will be tackled over the next couple of years out at Kana Island. You may recall last month, we had the first donation from the Maritime Museum of 100,000 to put towards hiring the architectural firm to do the design for all the restoration work that will be done in the next couple of years. So, I guess I'd certainly be happy to answer questions if you want more details on things, but it wasn't unanimous decision with our committee to recommend hiring River Architects for this first phase of the project.
Go ahead, Hugh.
Are they engaged on an hourly basis? How are they engaged?
It would be pretty much not to exceed lump sum amount based on all the different components. There's five different buildings to design with the restoration work, starting with the lighthouse tower as the, the main component of it, but also the keeper's house and the privy and the oil house, different things like that around the island.
So, they're working by the hour, not to exceed, is that what I hear?
Yeah, it would be a lump sum not to exceed 77,000.
You say lump sum?
Yeah.
An amount not to exceed?
Yeah, an amount not to exceed, yeah.
Are there any other questions? If not, go to the voter board on this one. We got to keep you trained to use it, so. Got to use it once or twice a day. That is passed on a vote of 21 yes, no negative ones. Next item is the NEW family care contract with Wisconsin DHS to operate the CMO. Mark, you can explain this one.
All right, first off, I'll make a motion to approve 2013-63.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Roy. Go ahead.
Okay, basically, this is finishing up what we started three years ago in October of 2010. It seems like it's taken forever to get here, but we formed the NEW Family Care District and we adopted a two resolution strategy, one to form the district, a second resolution to allow it to actually do family care. And with the imminent possibility that family care may show up here and Gary Bize's wonderful attempt to get that legislated, we need to have our CMO or MCO or whatever it goes by, many different names, but basically NEW Family Care District, ready to operate family care if it is awarded the RFP. And DHS has said they'd like to see us all support the organization that we founded back in 2010. So, this is basically the housekeeping end of it, finishing off what we started three years ago, allowing NEW Family Care, which I am the county representative on, there's a representative from all seven counties, and the three groups that family care serves, and finishing up that bit of business so that family care can move forward if we are allowed to.
Okay, are there any questions? If not, go to your voter board. Do you use it twice as wrong? Kenny.
I did.
Not.
I did. Take it.
Thank you. That passed 21 yes, no negative. So, we'll go to the Wisconsin Land Information Program grant in need to local government, Joel. Do you want to make a motion and explain it?
I'll make a motion to approve, please.
Is there a second?
Again?
Second.
Looks like you're on your own.
Yeah, thanks. Someone's going to have to probably assist me on this because I'm not 100% going to probably as good as he could do it, but the LIO Land Information Office is receiving a grant from the state and it's going to be to enhance, I believe, this, the way that our website, you know, that he manages for all the, for the GIS stuff is going to enhance with the county system. So, I wish he'd have been here. I should have been thinking to have him explain it much better, but it's something that is very good and beneficial to the county.
Okay. You're talking about Tim or?
Well, Tom, I hate the coordinator.
Does anybody have any questions? They trust the committee, by the way. We'll go to the voter board and vote on this one. That has passed on a vote of 21 yes. Next one is appointment and compensation to interim emergency service director. Maureen, you want to explain that?
Yes, we've had a resignation. Eric Christiansen resigned to pursue other opportunities, so we have, we need to name interim director of emergency services, Anthony Lucini. Anthony is here today. You want to come up to the, to the microphone if there's any questions? Anthony is currently our operations manager in the program. Congratulations to Anthony. He's had twins this week, or actually next Tuesday, last Tuesday was the birth date. So, he is a busy man, but has agreed to take on this additional duties of being our interim director. That appointment was passed through the administrative committee and it's subject to your confirmation today. There is a bump up in pay involved with this appointment, an additional $5.32 per hour that go along with this recommendation. And I know that Anthony is going to be spending that on diapers, would be my guess, with the twins. So, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Our HR director is the one who came, made that recommendation to bump up the pay. So, Kelly, certainly, if there's any questions, she'd be happy to answer them.
Is there a motion on the floor to accept this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, seconded by David Pleno. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Hugh.
This will create a position, another position that we fill later, is that what I would?
Yes, yes. It's important that we have someone in that department. Anthony is going to continue on as our operations manager, but for the moment, he is being bumped up to the interim director so that he can sign vouchers, so that he can continue to operate the department in the absence of a director. Probably in the next month or two, I'm looking at our HR director, will come to the administrative committee about filling the vacancy that was created by the resignation, but this is an interim appointment only.
Are there any other questions?
Girls, boys, one of each.
One of each.
One of each.
They're not identical, Leo.
Did, do we have names? Leo and Dan, I had heard, or that wouldn't be good for a girl.
Owen and Olivia.
Owen and Olivia.
Go to the voter board and vote yes or no on it. That has passed on a vote of 21 yes.
Thank you.
Next one is the approval of the collective bargaining agreement of Door County Sheriff's Association. Who's going to explain this? Should you explain this one? Or Kelly?
I think Grant.
Grant? Okay, Grant.
And Kelly, potentially. Kelly, if you want to come up.
Should we make a motion, put it on the floor first? Someone make a motion to approve it, to put it on the floor?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Ken, seconded by Cletus. Okay, go ahead.
Somebody do it here.
Go, come up here.
In your packet, there is a outline of the settlement. It is appendix H of the resolution. I don't know how you prefer me go through this, to read through it or just take questions right away. I can give you the highlights?
I think the highlights.
Okay. You have to put this in context. This is after Act 10 and after Act 32. So, with these employees, they're protected status employees. In some respects, we have two classes of employees. Those who were hired prior to the effective date of Act 10 and 32 and those that will be hired after the effective date. And where that comes in primarily is in their contribution towards the Wisconsin retirement system. Those employees that were hired after, that are hired after the effective date of the Act 10 and 32 will pay the required employee share of the Wisconsin retirement system contribution. To give you some context, in 2014, that will be 7%. Those that were hired prior to the effective date of Act 10 and 32 are not obligated to pay anything unless the employer can bargain it. So, with that in mind, what we have agreed to on a tentative basis, subject to the county board's approval, is a two-year agreement that begins on January 1, 2014 and ends on December 31, 2015. Across the board, wage adjustments that are set forth in the settlement summary of 2% effective January 1, 2014 and an additional 1% effective December 1, 2014, which in effect is a 2% increase in 2014, but a 3% lift at the end of the year. By that, I mean at year's end, you're basing the 2015 increase on the, not only the 2%, but also the 1% bump that was effective on December 1. On 2015, in 2015, we also did a split, January 1, 1% and then July 1, a 2% increase. What the bargaining unit gave principally in exchange for, in part, the wage adjustment, I should go back, the, for general municipal employees that are going to be represented, under the budget repair bill, they tie their, the increase in their base compensation to a consumer price index. It's called the CPIU. On January 1, 2014, which is about as far in the future that we can prognosticate, the increase will be 1.66%. So, you have to consider this group's wage adjustment in light of that. And also in terms of the WRS contribution, those employees, which are virtually all the employees presently employed by this bargaining unit, were, were working in that capacity in the sheriff's department, so they're not obligated to make any contribution towards the Wisconsin retirement system. What they have agreed to do, again, is a split. In 2014, starting on January 1, they will pay 1% and then beginning on July 1, they'll pay an additional 1%. So, what that is, is roughly, using attorney math, a 1.5% increase or contribution in 2014, a 1% for the entire year and then an additional 1% for six months. Then going into 2015, they're going to pay an additional 2%. You'll note, that's less than what an employee who was hired after the effective date of the budget repair bill will pay, but that is out of our hands. The state created two classes of public safety employees for purposes of WRS. There's nothing we can do about it. And it's going to take some time to bargain the present employees up to that level. What we have to remember as a municipal employer is sooner or later, through attrition, all those employees who were hired prior to the effective date of the budget repair bill will retire or move on and our entire workforce then will be paying 100% of the employee share. Health insurance coverage, the bargaining unit agreed to bump up the percentage that they pay in terms of the premium from 10% to 12.8%. While that doesn't seem like a significant increase, what you have to keep in mind is under the budget repair bill, even for public safety employees, the only thing that municipal employers are required to bargain are the premium contribution. The rest of it, and that is described broadly in the legislation, is characterized as healthcare coverage plan design and selection. And that's been the subject of much litigation in the past year, year and a half, and that litigation in whole has come down on the municipal employer's side. And the lesson to be taken from the litigation so far is that the only thing municipal employers are required to bargain are the premium contributions. Nothing else in terms of health insurance. So, you'll see a good chunk of the existing 47-page collective bargaining agreement that deals with health insurance disappear. The only thing that's going to be in there is the premium contribution. We get into side of the routine things. Under the current collective bargaining agreement, we're going to have to remove any prohibited subjects of bargaining. And those are primarily the WRS contribution, those employed on or after July 1, 2011, and healthcare coverage plan design and selection within the meaning of the statute. The other changes are fairly, I guess, specific and don't have much to do at all with the change in the legislation, but specific to our workplace and our unit is, and this is something that the county requested and the bargaining unit agreed to, is that those employees employed after January 1, 2014 in the jail, that would be a security deputy or security sergeant, won't be able to post for what's commonly known as road positions and vice versa. Those that are employed after January 2014 as road deputies, road sergeants, investigators won't be able to post into the jail. They'll still be able to come in through the outside hiring process and what we've provided here is a preference to increase their, by five points, a passing examination score or rating of an applicant per position. The reason for this, and I think, well, if Terry were here, could explain better, maybe Chuck has some insight too, but over the past five, 10, 15 years, as we've seen in every profession, we're seeing some specialization. The education for corrections is specific to corrections. The education for being on the road is specific to the road. There are two separate tests, two separate career paths, and it simply, I think, in the mind of Door County and in the mind of the bargaining unit, didn't necessarily make sense to allow people on the road to post in the jail or people in the jail to post on the road because they might not have the requisite experience. The idea behind posting is that the most senior qualified person in the bargaining unit is going to get first shot at the job. And at least in this one aspect, we've going away from it. Again, we're taking a measured approach. We're not impacting those that are currently employed. It will impact those that are employed after January 1, 2014. And that's the way we get, we're able to negotiate many of these changes and traditionally is if it affects people coming in a door after the bargain is struck, the current bargaining unit is more likely to go along with it than if it impacts everybody. In terms of holidays, what we did was try to conform everybody's holidays to the county's employee handbook. It doesn't make that big of a difference with, with an operation like the sheriff's department that's 24/7, but it just makes sense for all the employees within the county to be operating on the same holiday work schedule. Going on to page three, as to do with holiday work paid, the court security deputies who work in the justice center are on duty to serve the courts. The courts aren't on duty, aren't open during holidays. And what we had is a situation where the court security deputies would report to work. We would have to pay them time and a half above and beyond their holiday pay because they're working on a holiday and they don't have anything to, you know, at least to do that's related to their job, related to the job serving the court, so they would find other things for them to do. Both the county and the bargaining unit agreed that the court security deputies would not be regularly scheduled to work on holidays when the courts are closed. It's kind of a common sense thing, but it's something you have to bargain in a bargaining environment. In terms of the annual clothing allowance, that will remain static at the 2013 level. What's important is we negotiated a seven-year book. So, this is really remained static for the better part of a decade because it didn't increase during the course of those seven years. We removed the shift differential. In terms of the floating holidays, we simply are trying to conform the advance notice to the advance notice that is required for the use of vacation, just to simplify the administration. That was something that the bargaining, the bargaining unit and the county agreed on. Notice of sick leave, that's been increased. The reason for that is in the sheriff's department, if I'm working a particular shift and the employee that follows me calls in sick, I would rather have two hours notice than 10 minutes notice because the consequence generally is the person working that shift carries over at least for half the shift till we get somebody else in. So, it's convenient for the people that are working and also, most of the time, we've accepted emergencies from this. If you're too ill to come to work, you're generally going to know that two hours in advance or your shift starts starting and you ought to probably call in and give people, people notice at least two hours in advance. And if you know sooner, the sooner the better, so that alternate arrangements can be made. We have, over the seven-year life of the last collective bargaining agreements, entered into a bunch of memorandums of understanding and sidebar as letters of agreement, which increased significantly the length of an already lengthy collective bargaining agreement. We are going to take those from being standalone documents and incorporate those into the collective bargaining agreement. And the final thing is we have agreed to And the final thing is, we have agreed to create a Labor Management Council to start talking about health and fitness standards and assessments, see if we can reach a consensus on what those should be, and hopefully, in the ideal world, we'll be prepared to implement those at the end of this current collective bargaining agreement, which ends at the end of 2015, which means we'll start bargaining about mid-year of 2015. I don't know if anybody has any questions? Long-winded explanation, but both, I think, the negotiating committee for the county and the bargaining unit deserve some credit, because we essentially banged this out in a single day of bargaining. I think the bargaining unit was reasonable. I think the negotiating committee was reasonable, and we've reached a decent settlement that serves the interest of both parties. We've made incremental changes, perhaps not as much as we would like to from the county's standpoint, but changes nonetheless, in terms of increasing the health insurance premium, and also, for the first time, this group of employees contributing an amount to the Wisconsin retirement system.
And if I could, Supervisor Fisher participated on the committee. I don't know if he has anything that he wishes to add.
Matt took care of all of it.
Okay. Blame Grant.
Are there any other questions?
With a few more words than I would have taken, but...
I do recall a good job on the part of the negotiating committee with this.
Okay, no questions. Go to the, go ahead, you.
Does that recall, the personnel in the jail were, are sworn deputies versus non-sworn? Is that still true?
That's still true.
Yes.
Are the incoming employees going to be non-sworn deputies or not?
That is based on recent case law, up to management's discretion. We did not think it was appropriate to tackle that issue this year, but certainly, the sheriff and the Law Management Committee could take that up. That wouldn't be subject to bargaining. That is something that, at least I think, from a managed perspective, I think, a lot of the story is yet to be written. The Wisconsin Supreme Court hasn't taken this up yet, but the precedent that's out there seems to suggest that whether or not the jailers are public safety employees or general municipal employees is up to the discretion of the counties. Now, a county can't take, I'll try to think of a ridiculous example, brook trout and say it's really a walleye. So if we have our jailers as general municipal employees, they are going to have to very much look like general municipal employees, and some of the position descriptions and some of their duties perhaps might have to be tweaked. But that's something that we're aware of from the management side and have discussed, and I, and Maureen may want to jump in, but I just think it was something that we didn't feel a need to tackle right at this moment, and really, the sheriff is going to have much to say about that, because he has a lot of discretion with respect to the operation of the jail.
What I can add to that is that my counterparts throughout the state that have tried this, it has been a very controversial move. So I think for, at this point, my recommendation would be, we, we sit back and watch what other counties are doing with this, because it creates quite a change from the way we're operating. Maybe revisit this, this decision in the next year or two would be something that we would want to do. Remember, we've had the, an item that you're about to adopt later in this agenda on the administrative manual, we've had the benefit of sitting out and letting other counties maneuver through Act 10. And now, I'm pretty confident in what we're adopting is, is good policy. This is one of those items similar to that. It's good to be on the tail end of that discussion, rather than...
Forefront.
Rather than leading, leading it, because it's costing a lot of litigation, and I know that Grant's plate is full at the moment, so it's good for us to sit it out and wait a year and see what other counties are going through.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no. That has passed on a vote of 21, yes, no negatives. Next item is limits on the monopurpose and annual expenditures. Grant, you want to explain this one?
I think the best way to characterize this resolution is simply a restatement of Section 65.90, which controls the county budget process, and a reaffirmation of that, and perhaps a refocus on the point that, and this is as simple as I can put it, you know, if it ain't in the budget in terms of a revenue, in terms of an expenditure, and hasn't been authorized through the annual budget process, or by adoption of a resolution by 2/3 of the entire membership of the county board, we ought not be spending the money, or appropriating the money, or borrowing the money. And this came up in the Finance Committee, if you recall, from last month. I did not attend that Finance Committee meeting. I did attend the Finance Committee meeting earlier this month, and had a better understanding of what the Finance Committee intended to do. And I think it's just a good reminder to the department heads and the oversight committees that you have to be fairly careful about your budgeting during the course of the year. And if you want something included in the budget, the best way to do it is through the annual budget process and the budget hearings and meetings that occur early in November each year.
This is a reflection back on multi-purpose building at the fairgrounds to make sure that it gets a final approval before the county board, so. Is there a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2013.
Motion by David, seconded by Joel. Are there any questions? Go to the voter board.
Just confirm. What I did, sorry.
Thank you. That has passed on a vote of 21, yes. Next item is the museum expansion archives project. Ben Meyer, you're up. You want to make a motion to approve it?
I will do so. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 201368.
Sure, second? Second by Biz. Go ahead.
All right. Way of explanation, basically, the county has acquired properties at 434 and 442 Michigan Street. The county has authorized a plan to be put together to expand the museum and archives at that locations, at that location, under one roof. And basically, earlier this year, we set aside $500,000 to help get that project started and to expand the museum. And I'd like to just draw your attention to lines 28 through 30. Whereas Door County's firm support, financial and otherwise, is crucial to ensure that fundraising for the museum archives project and the project itself moves forward and is completed in a timely manner. In other words, the county's commitment to the, this expansion project is, is critical. What we're asking is that the community help us come forward with $2 million, and that's explained on lines 32 through 36, so that this full project can, can actually move forward. So basically, the bottom line is, by passing this resolution, we as a county board are making a firm commitment to this project, that once that $2 million is raised by our community, we'll have our $500,000 to back that up, and the project will move forward. Questions?
Are there any questions? Hugh.
Just a clarification. In other words, the $500,000 doesn't become available until the $2 million is raised.
Let me quote right from the resolution. $500,000, this is line 34, will be made available for the museum archives project if and when the sum of donation gifts and grants equals $2 million.
Well, we're giving you a grant of a half a million dollars, right?
I don't think that's considered into that $2 million. In other words, they have to raise $2 million addition to the $500,000. That's not a grant or a, that won't be part of the $2 million.
Yeah. So I'd just like to comment, if I can, in general, if I may.
Go ahead.
You know, the record would reflect that I'm not an anti-archives person or something like this, but from a very practical standpoint, I question why we, why we're going to do such a large project here. In other words, if you took and tore down the building, you could build a pretty nice, I think, archive building for probably certainly half a million. And I would hope that people who, before they think and vote on this thing, have toured the current facility to see what it's like. It's a great little museum over there. And when we transferred the $500,000 last month, everyone says, well, you get another kick to the cap. And now, basically, what we're doing is, we're kind of giving the green light to go ahead to this whole thing. Like, the blueprints will probably never come back to this committee. They just, if they can fit within the budget, they can, they build it. So I just question the, the soundness of thought, I mean, just going to barge your head here with a $2.5 million project. Not only will it be a bigger building, then we do more heat, and we have to have more cleaning and more staff, and it's just, it's, the building itself, as we've just demonstrated with the, like, the Justice Center, just the tip of the iceberg to the expenses, and I'm having a difficult time supporting this resolution.
Ben, you want to respond to that, or?
Sure, I'll do my best. I think I'd invite Supervisor Mulliken and everyone to take a look at the plan as it's been put together. First of all, the people who, who put it together are outstanding members of our, our community, and have done their best to understand the ins and outs of the, the site location there. As I understand it, there's, there may or may not be bedrock shortly, or, excuse me, just underneath the, the museum, and that's very difficult to determine, to the extent of which that rock exists underneath the ground. And that is kind of driving this, the price of this project up a bit. But certainly, the location is, is ideal, and, and the museum is, is wonderful, but I think the public misses out on what is not shown, because there is quite a bit of storage, or, excuse me, not, actually, not that much storage, but those items stored in that area are, are unique and are not be able, are not able to be displayed. Furthermore, the, going back to that small storage room, it's, it's frankly, you know, not a very good room for those archives, and the building that is currently housing our archives is totally inadequate. We will eventually lose that history, because it will have deteriorated right in our hands. So that's why it's important to do a building, project like this, that takes those things into account.
I could further answer, Hugh, is that the property committee will be in charge of, if it ever comes to fruition, the, looking at the plans and making sure the plans. All they have now is the conceptual plan, and the main reason that this is here is that we don't want them to go out and raise $2 million and come back to the county board and says, we're not going to build it. You know, this is a commitment, if they do get that, it's going to be very difficult, very difficult to raise that. It might be, if it is done, that they'll commit themselves to do it, that they don't go through all the process, get the money, and then we say, we're not going to do it.
Let me summarize, I think, the scope of the project may be too large.
That could be. It might be, you know, and eventually, down the line, as you know, I've been involved with this, it might be that they only raise a million, million and a half, and don't, and then they'll start, come back to the process of downscaling or doing something to effect. But you, I guess, when we put this plan together, we said, dream big, dream as if it's what you really want, and that's what this is. Depending upon how the donations come in, it might be down scaled. It all depends, and it's up to the property committee, though.
Maybe one more detail to add. We currently maintain the, the buildings on this site, the 434 and 442 Michigan, and have items housed there in a non-climate controlled condition. What we need is to control those conditions, and also, as far as, as heat and other utilities, I think, by the time we're done with this project, we'll have a much more efficient system. And about, you know, probably not, if you, if you look at our current square footage, we're not actually adding that much. We're basically tearing down an old house and, and building a nice new facility. That'll be probably a lot easier to maintain than what we currently have. So the cost to that would, you know, be a slight increase and not astronomical.
Neil?
Yeah, and remember, this is a, somebody has to raise this $2 million.
Correct.
Through grants, or whatever. But another part of this also is that there's a lot of communities out there that have archives, spread out everywhere, and this would be nice to bring them all together. Maybe have an Egg Harbor room, an Ephraim room, you know, Liberty Grove room. So the whole county will be under one nice, you know, archive area. So it's, you know, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor to have, and I think you're going to find a lot of interest throughout the county on this. I know Ephraim just built a museum, Hugh, not too long ago. I don't, that was kind of a pricey thing, too.
And they're not going to move their stuff, Dale, over here.
Oh, no, they're not going to, but other people probably will.
I don't know that they will. I think they've all got projects. Each of those communities, Liberty Grove and Jacksonport, and all those people are working on their Egg Harbor.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
But this is something that's local.
This might help them out, too.
Yeah.
I, I have a question about the building. How old is the building?
Which, what, um...
That you're currently in.
1939.
Okay. So is that something that qualifies as a historic site?
Oh, I don't know that.
That's a great old building. And I, I guess, I, from, where I come from with this, or in this, is that, that it's a historical site, it's been there for a long time, and I'm certainly not from here, but I would question tearing down a building.
We're not going to be tearing, we're not going to be tearing down the museum. It's the building, it's east of the museum that houses the archives right now. It's a...
So the building would stay where it is?
Absolutely. It's an addition to that building, to the museum itself.
So this is an addition to it?
Yes. Correct.
Without altering the, what you're currently doing.
Correct. There was a plan here two years ago, or something like that, that everybody saw, and the property committee did see.
I missed a minute's lady.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, go to your voter board and vote yes or no.
God, I don't know what to do with this.
Big red one.
That has passed on a vote of 19, yes, two, no. Next item is the adoption of administrative manual. Who's going to handle this? Kelly?
Yes.
We have a motion to put it on the floor, David, seconded by Cletus. Good morning.
So, long-awaited, very anticipated manual has arrived. As Maureen had mentioned, the manual has been vetted out by the project team for several months. The department heads have had an opportunity to review it. It was brought forward to the administrative committee, and lengthy discussions took place. The administrative committee decided to make a couple of recommendations to this. They grandfathered the administrative leave and the PTO for five part-time employees. Then, the administrative committee asked if I would meet with each of the oversight committees. So during the month of October, I've been going around and taking questions, concerns, and any other recommendations that the committees came forward with. With that, in my memo, I highlighted those, kind of discussed that right now. If there are more questions or anything that I can answer, I don't know that you would want to walk through it page by page at this point. I think that's been done.
It's been done by every committee. I think everybody had, pretty much, a talk into it. Leo?
I was just advised that perhaps we're taking the resolutions out of order, in that we should perhaps work on the evacuation plan before we adopt it.
Yes, Kelly, we have the book from September 12th, the first draft. Could you highlight the difference between the September 12th draft and the October 22nd draft? I was trying to go through page by page, and I said, oh, golly, that must be an easier way.
You won't find many changes to most of it. A lot of it is law, as Grant had pointed out in the memo that was included back in September. The highlights are the grandfathering of the administrative leave. That was also included on the page that was in front of you today.
Page 22.
Page 22.
Okay.
The special pay, which is on page 13. Here, special pay. Page 16. Under special pay, there were some updates to that, to include highway. Those were brought forward during the committee visits that I made. So you have telecommunications, you have, winter operations premium was added. So, you have telecommunicators, you have, winter operations premium was added, and the first one on page 15 for crisis premium was also increased. Also updated was the paid time off policy, 2.10, which is on page 21 and 22. And under your hours of work, on page 34, telecommunicators were added to that. And that would be all of the updates.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Under updates and modifications as needed, how is that procedure going to work? Through the county board again, or can that be changed through the admin committee?
It would come back forward to the administrative committee.
I think it goes to the admin committee, and it's got, definitely come to the county board.
Yes.
Definitely come to the county board.
For any change, huh?
Yes, correct.
And we do have a lot more work to do. We have some more policies to add and update, so it...
I guess to add to, you know, this is, you did mention, I don't think you did, this is a living document that can be changed, that the will of the county board.
Go ahead, well, go ahead, Susan.
Just a clarification. In your memo, you have the discussion about the part-time people being grandfathered. That's not language in the administrative manual, it's just in the minutes of the admin committee, and thus will happen?
And it will be documented in finance. So, payroll has that.
Great, thank you.
Any other que, oh, John?
I guess I would ask everybody in this room, do you fully understand and have ample time to review this administrative manual? That you feel like you want to vote on it today? Have you all had ample time to review the changes? That's the only question I would like to ask.
Does everybody agree, or did you have time? Because we've had it for, what, two months now?
Yes.
I agree. I like the way the procedure was, where everybody had time to look at it, went through committee, went through, you know, everybody, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Go to the voter board and vote yes or no.
That is voted 20 yes, and one has abstained.
Next item.
No need to.
This actually came before the property committee more than the administrative committee, didn't it, Ben? I think you should be explaining, make a motion, bring her forward, and explain it.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2013-70.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chuck. Go ahead.
Basically, what you have before you is a policy, or set of policies, relating to how we will operate in case of an emergency. For example, if the, if the fire alarm were to go off this moment, where would we go? Where would we all meet? Well, once we vote on this, the answer will be City Hall, for a second. But right now, you can see how that kind of confusion in an emergency would, would not be a good thing. So, obviously, this is the first step. Following this, we'll have plenty of training, and ongoing training, on what it all means for employees, including us. So, that's a motion.
Are there any questions, Susan?
It's not a question. I just want to, I think that all the parties involved in this did a really good job. I mean, it's short, sweet, clear.
I don't know about short.
Yeah. Well, for all those emergencies, I think it is pretty short.
Okay.
Certainly see more tedious versions of something like this.
For those of you that don't know, the staff involved with this were Buildings and Grounds Director, Emergency Services Director, the Sheriff's Department, IS Department was involved at times. We now are getting ready to turn it over to our Human Resources Director, because, of course, the plan is only as good as the training that goes into telling our employees how to react when there is an emergency. Another highlight in this is the, the way that we react to active shooters. You probably are aware, in, the, the training on this has changed dramatically. It used to be where you would hide from an active shooter, now it's get out of the building. That is the big change when it comes to that. So, there'll be some training that goes on. We also have some instances in the building where we'll be utilizing our PA system, our public address system. If there's a, we're referring to any potential issues as Mr. Roberts, and there'll be some more training through our Hu, Human Resources Director. If we hear an announcement on the PA system, we'll be talking a little bit more, I think, on a, at a staff level about what to do if there's an emergency in the building, and I'll leave it at that.
Neil?
Didn't Sturgeon Bay Police and Sturgeon Bay Fire Department have a big help out with this also?
Thank you, yes. Thank you for remembering that, when I didn't. Sturgeon Bay Police Department was in on the meetings as well. Another piece to this that's not in this is that our Sheriff's Department and City Police Department are aware of where the various buildings are, and the, the various offices within this building, which is a first for us. So, they have, the building plans, as shared by our Buildings and Grounds Director, and they're aware. They have access to the building, they have keys to the building and every squad, because remember, City Police Department is less than half a block away from here. In all likelihood, they'll be responding to any emergency ahead of our Sheriff's Department, which, of course, is across a couple of bridges. So, this really was a joint effort, and a thank you, thank you Supervisor Wiegand for pointing that out. Thank you to the Police Department, City Police Department, for being involved with this as well.
Are there any other questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board. That has passed on a vote of 21 yes. Next item is establishment of the dates for the Dark County Fair. Chuck, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to pass Resolution Number 2013-71.
Seconded by Dale. Go ahead and explain why we did this unilaterally, I guess, you and I.
I, I guess what happened was, over, over the past years, the Fair Board felt that when they had an opportunity to move forward with locking in some class acts that would be out there, if they had to wait until an undetermined time, say, before our November meeting, that they were unable to contact these people, because we didn't have fair dates locked in. As it stands right now with the resolution before you, we're locking in the 2014 fair date and leaving some latitude in the fair dates for the next couple of years after that. So, we ask for your support in that, to, also, to get our fair date listed in some of the county magazines that are going to be published and coming due before our actual county board meeting.
Are there any questions? If not, go to your voter board. That has passed on a vote of 21 yes. Next item is the text amendment regarding miniature golf. Ken, you want to make a motion to, now, if we vote for this, make a motion first, Ken.
Well, I think I'm going to hold off on the motion, Mr. Chairman, so we can get some clarification here. I'd rather discuss a little bit first.
Okay. My right grant is, if you make a motion now, the motion would be to deny, which would take a yes vote, is that correct?
Correct. Because under 5969, the statute's, because the recommendation from the RPC is to deny the petition, the county board has two options. It can vote in the affirmative to deny the petition, or it has the option, under the statute, of refusing to deny the petition as recommended, in which case it shall re-refer the petition to the agency with directions to draft an ordinance to effectuate the petition and report the ordinance back to the board, which may then be enacted or rejected if the board deems fit.
Okay.
Okay. If I understand you, Grant, because what I'm leaning towards is making a motion to deny the denial, basically, and that would then send it back to RPC to re-discuss it, maybe not come up with a different opinion, but to re-discuss it, and there would be no, no further charges to any of the parties to bring it back to us. Is that correct?
Actually, the, the option would be for the county board to refuse to deny the petition, and the statute is quite clear. It says, "In which case it shall re-refer the petition to the agency," which would be the Resource Planning Committees, Committee with Directions to draft an ordinance to effectuate the petition.
So, it does accomplish what I'm saying.
Correct, but the RPC would have to...
Make one.
Make, make it.
Create an ordinance.
Right. I'll make a motion then, with that being, all that being said, I'd make a motion, we deny this denial and send it back.
Okay, motion by Ken, seconded by Holly. Okay, it's on the floor.
It should be noted that we did pass it unanimously, but, and I know we're not supposed to take testimony beyond the hearing, but some things have come up. There's just questions being asked that I think this would be, I believe this would be the better way to handle it.
David?
So, just to be clear, if we vote in favor of Ken's recommendate, uh, motion, we would be essentially, as a board, telling the RPC to create an ordinance to follow the request of the parties that have submitted the request.
Correct. That's the option available to the county board. If it refuses to deny, the petition is recommended by the RPC. And then the ordinance would be reported back to the county board. The county board then would have the discretion to enact the ordinance or reject the ordinance.
Yeah, so effectively, county boards, if it votes with Ken's motion, the county board is stating that you must create an ordinance for us to review.
Correct.
Susan?
Okay, and I don't mean to be a lunkhead, but just to clarify further, in other words, overturning what we decided, essentially.
Yes, exactly.
Which, frankly, I have a problem with.
Chuck?
Does this address some of that in that email that we received from the town of Gibraltar?
I think that would be up to the RPC when it gets back there to address it, you know.
Or, I mean, if, continues their, their request.
Yeah. Normally, what hap, well, I won't confuse it. Go ahead, Leo.
I was under the impression that if we did not accept the recommission, uh, recommendation or the petition of the RPC, or we were going to do something contrary to what they recommended to us, then we, as a county board, become the hearing body that would rehear the entire case. Is that correct, Grant?
No. The, the, if the county board refuses to deny the petition as recommended by the RPC, the only option available is to report the ordinance back to county, to the Resource Planning Committee, which then would draft an ordinance and forward it back to county board at the next meeting, and then the county board would have the ability to either enact the ordinance or reject the ordinance. But the public hearing occurred on the 19th, September, I think it was September 19th, yes, in front of the Resource Planning Committee, and that's the single public hearing that the statute envisions with respect to this ordinance. That's why we don't allow public comment at the county board level on a mandatory zoning petitions, or consider additional information that might be brought forward.
So, when it goes back to the RPC and they reinvent the ordinance, do they have to have a public hearing on an ordinance?
No, it's simply a matter of, what would happen, because this has occurred before, the planning department would draft an ordinance that reflects the petition for amendment. It would go through the Resource Planning Committee, back to county board, but then county board is under no obligation to enact the ordinance. It may still reject the ordinance as recommended by the Resource Planning Committee, just through a different process. But there is no further hearing here, or in front of the Resource Planning Committee. It's simply a matter of drafting an ordinance to reflect the petition for amendment and sending it back to county board at the next meeting.
What happens if the Resource Planning Committee votes down the new ordinance? Does it still come to the county board?
The, the Resource Planning Committee doesn't say yes or no. It simply forwards the ordinance. But then, it's important to know, the county board is under no obligation to enact it. The county board can enact or reject it.
Okay, Ken?
Uh, I think Grant said, "At the next county board meeting." Well, since the next county board meeting is...
Next regular meeting.
No, that, okay, which would be when?
December 10. December 10.
That would, that would give us enough time, I think. Is Mariah in the back there at all?
Dick, Pete.
Would that give us enough time to do it by December?
I guess so. I'm a little confused as to what's going on.
We all are.
Yeah.
Why don't you ask her for a comment?
Go ahead, Dick. I just wanted to ask the other two board members there, David and Hugh, what they think of this.
Well, I, this is sort of going back to the nitty gritty. When the town of Gibraltar forwarded the, their letter of approval to it, it was on a two-to-one vote. It was certainly not any kind of majority. There were two people who didn't vote, and as I recall, the request was to change some of the, the town of Gibraltar has its own zoning districts, and the petition was included changing the zoning, the building of the different zoning districts outside, in other words, MC district. And so, I suspect that the Resource Planning Committee, when it voted on it, said, "It might be okay for Gibraltar," but they're really sort of opening the door for these changes throughout the entire county. And I think that's probably the most significant reason why that the RPC decided not to endorse the Gibraltar's asking.
I have a question, just to clarify, and I don't disagree with what you just said, or what Susan said. If we deny Ken's motion, and it goes back to the RPC, does the RPC re-vote on this issue, or is it still come forward as an ordinance with the recommendation to deny by the RPC?
We deny the denial that comes forward as an ordinance, period.
With the recommendation to still deny by the RPC.
Well, deny, no, to approve what we bring back.
Wait a second, Grant. If, the way I understand it, if Ken's motion is voted with a yes vote, positive yes vote, it goes automatically back to the RPC.
To create an ordinance.
To create an ordinance to come forward.
But that ordinance, the, the recommendation is to deny. The vote was taken, it was unanimous by the RPC to deny. So, does that vote still stand?
No.
And the ordinance comes forward, and the recommendation is still to deny?
No.
What, what happens is the, the county board refu, recognizes the Resource Planning Committee's recommendation that was brought forth today by virtue of its report. It refuses to deny the petition for amendment as recommended by the Resource Planning Committee, and ordinance then must be drafted to reflect the petition for amendment, and it comes forward to county board, basically, without any recommendation from RPC, and then the county board has the ability to either enact or reject the ordinance.
Okay, so the RPC, when it goes back up to formulate the ordinance, does not re-vote either approve or deny, or recommend, or a recommendation to approve or deny?
No, the RPC's sole function, if the county board refuses to deny the petition for amendment, is to make sure that the ordinance that is drafted reflects the petition for amendment.
I guess what I disagree with is, the county board doesn't have, didn't sit in front of the 75 people that testified either for or against this. They weren't part of the public hearing, and the RPC did come up with unanimous recommendation. And I don't understand exactly why we're trying to overturn that, or make the changes. I mean, if, if, if it's, if it's just be denied by the board, if Gibraltar wants to come back and... back and redo another tax amendment, do something different, then do it that way. I mean, I don't see what we're, what we're accomplishing in here.
Can I interject one thing?
Go ahead.
At least in response to what's been said so far. I'd respectfully like to correct what Mr. Melikan said. The amendments would only affect Gibraltar. So there was no discussion at the Resource Planning Committee level about this opening the door or allowing for things to happen in other towns. It was just affecting Gibraltar, and I think that was made very clear by staff, and I think the Resource Planning Committee members understood that. So that's not one of the reasons that the Resource Planning Committee had us read back to them as reason for their denial. And we did, I mean, they approved the minutes at the last meeting. I don't, I guess we didn't go over these reasons in detail, but they were reviewed by the committee, the reasons for denial.
Ken?
And Dave, this goes back before you were on the board. There were times when the RPC brought decisions to the board, we discussed it, and voted against what they recommended and sent it back to them. That's not that you knew, but it does happen.
But your motion is not to vote against it.
And that's what we're asking for now. That even though the RPC passed it in their meeting, we're saying things of, not that we're opening up another hearing, but there's just too many questions to let it go, as is the town board did request this.
But the RPC can't re-vote on it.
No, we won't re-vote on it. We'll bring back, basically what we'll bring back, if I understand it, Grant.
That hasn't heard any of the testimony or anything else.
We will bring back the proposal that the town brought to us originally, with some variations to it, possibly.
When it comes back to the county board, the county board can hear the testimony from the five members of the RPC relating to us what the testimony was before them. But nobody else can. Correct?
That's part of the debate and discussion.
Can any new, can any new testimony be added, or only what was presented to the RPC?
One public hearing, that's, that's it.
So anything additional we've received from Gibraltar since then still couldn't be admitted for purposes of reviewing our deny, our recommendation to deny.
So the recent email is ineffective and has no merit to this case.
Susan?
I guess I would like to reiterate what David said. The burden of proof is on the applicant. The applicant was the town. We made our decision, right or wrong, based on what we heard. So, the town does have other recourse. They could come back and schedule it and have a new hearing and a, and a new process. And I think that's more appropriate than making a decision this way without all of that, as David said, all of that's, we listened a long time on that one, so.
David?
I have talked to at least one town of Gibraltar board member that has expressed an interest and willingness to work with the RPC to create a variation of an ordinance that's more appropriate also, in our view, which would be a slight change to the title from just plain amusement park to something to equivalent, in my mind, of a low-impact amusement park, which would satisfy their needs. But I'd rather not do this denial of denial and work through that process. Do it correctly, actually create what's appropriate and satisfies their needs and their constituents.
Ben?
I guess I agree with Supervisor Enigles' tact here, that to kind of deny the denial is, is kind of seems to be a backwards sort of process. What we ought to do is, you know, first of all, for, you know, from where I sit, I have a hard time understanding exactly what's being asked here. You know, placing a C in the MC and RC, zoning district columns. You know, I think I, you know, if, if we could have just a, just a quick background explanation on that next, that would be fantastic. But it seems that the town could always, could, could always petition to, to make the changes that they want. There would be a public hearing on that. People would get to discuss that specifically. That would come before the RPC, who would then make a decision.
Okay.
But I guess if we could have just a, an explanation on what exactly this is about.
Okay. Well, the town of Gibraltar petition to take, to have miniature golf as a standalone clarification rather than being encompassed into the amusement park category. So they could, they could put it in these various districts, okay? Right now, it's just amusement park, so they could put anything in there, and it could be rather, a little more noisy, let's say, than what miniature golf would be.
But all that is subject to a conditional use permit process?
Yes. What Ken said is, is the basics of it. Right now, the definition of amusement park in the zoning ordinance includes miniature golf. So if you're applying for a miniature golf course, you're categorized as amusement park, you get a conditional use permit. What Gibraltar was asking was to, just in the town of Gibraltar, well, to separate out miniature golf from amusement park in the definitions, and then in the town of Gibraltar to then allow miniature golf in a new district, which right now doesn't allow amusement parks, which includes miniature golf. So it wasn't going to affect any of the other towns in terms of where, what uses would be allowed, but we did send it to the other towns because it was changing a definition that's used in all of the other towns. So the effect would be that you'd be able to have miniature golf in a district in Gibraltar right now where you cannot, is what it comes down to.
And of those kinds of impacts, that would, activities, that's the only activity they're talking about. But if they wanted to do a batting cage, they'd have to, they wouldn't be allowed to.
Okay.
Unless it was part of the miniature golf course.
Joel?
That's not a miniature golf thing.
Thoroughly confused, but what I think I understand is that, I'm, I'm starting to agree with what Susan and Dave are saying, is to, to get away from the confusion of this, I think on everybody's part, other than probably the RPC members, end this thing, go back to square one, let them re-petition and start over fresh and get a whole new perspective on this. That's what I think needs to happen. And if that's an option.
Okay. Grant, I got one question. By the motion on the floor is, if you vote yes, you basically are sending it back to RPC to come back with another ordinance. If you vote no, is that the final vote, or do we have to vote again to deny the?
No, then I think there needs to be a motion to deny the petition.
Okay. So it's going to take two votes. That's what I thought.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This, this just came up this morning for me, and I talked with our administrator, and this was kind of, as I understand it, this, by denying it was a cleaner way to do it because it goes back with the town, or to the town without them having any, having to reapply and have another fee and all that kind of stuff. It just, it'd be a simpler way to just take care of it. The, the confusion or the-
If I could, I didn't, sure, but I didn't weigh in on giving you any advice. We said we needed to talk to the attorney.
I made a mistake in running the meeting. I let, I let the, an individual who might put in a miniature golf into the area talk first. All the people that spoke against it, and they got, I could tell they were upset with me when they gave their address, and I said, "No, not where you live here, not your place that you own here. Where do you pay, where do you vote?" And then it was all over the country. And I talked, since then, I had the occasion to talk to Andy Phillips, and I asked him point-blank, in a situation like that, who do we listen to? Do we listen to our, our voters, or do we listen to people from outside who don't vote for us? He said, "You listen to your voters. They're your constituents, not people that own property right there." And it were these, it was these outsiders that let some of the people on the RPC say, "Oh, we have to listen to these people," and they put weight there that, based on what Andy Phillips said, we shouldn't have done, all right? And that's where the squawking came from. It was people from Milwaukee, Minnesota, Chicago, that didn't want it there because they lived there two weeks out of the year, okay? And the people that were speaking for it were, were the local people. And I just feel it'd be a, you know, vote it down, vote against me if you want, but I think we made a mistake here, or I made a mistake in running it that way, and it shouldn't have been.
Well, okay. The motion before the floor is, do you deny? If you vote yes, it's going to go back to RPC to reinvent the ordinance, so to speak, and come here. If we vote no-
Well, that's not the way I take it.
No, no. Well, let me finish what I'm saying. If you vote yes on the motion that's on the floor, it's going to go back to the RPC to have another ordinance drafted to come before the county board with no public hearing at all, period.
Correct.
Okay. And if you vote no on Kenny's motion, then we're going to have after that, one more vote to either de, agree with the resource planning for denial, or if it votes, gets voted down and goes back there again, doesn't it?
Correct. And that's a refusal to deny the petition.
Exactly.
And then it goes back to doing the same thing that if we voted for Kenny's motion, so.
So you got that. On the motion that's on the floor, a yes vote, we'll send it back to RPC to come forward with an ordinance with no public hearings at all, period. Case over.
If it gets defeated, does the town get to come back to us, does the town get to come back to us with no cost to reapply for this? Because the re-
No, they have to pay.
One of the reasons we turned it down was it was only two to one. They were in favor of this, and we still went against the town. And that, that kind of sticks with me because-
I don't know who could waive the fee for coming back for-
But it was, it was argued that it wasn't a five-to-nothing vote or a four-to-one vote, it was only two to one.
Go ahead.
We've, the policy that the county board adopted in 2009, when you adopted our current fee schedule, was that fees could be waived for towns if there was a public purpose behind the request, meaning something like a public project or building of some sort, or if they were doing something that was clearly implementing their comprehensive plan, which this, is not this issue, so.
Okay.
And if I could, I need to make one thing clear. I gave you no advice. I suggested you talk to the preparation council.
I didn't say you did. I said, "Talk to you."
Thank you.
Okay, David?
Try to make this my last comment. I still feel the more appropriate way is for the RPC and the planning department, with the help of Gibraltar, develop a different subcategory of amusement that fits their category. Right now, what they're choosing to do is to allow a specific type of activity, miniature golf, that they have admitted to, the only kind they want to see will be a red-putter equivalent. They would not want to see a Johnson Park style with all the water and everything else moving. That was a big issue for me also. So for me, I'd much rather see the RPC take it up with the planning department and Gibraltar's input, which their town board has already expressed a willingness to work with us to do, to actually create an appropriate thing that was more appropriate for the entire county rather than a specific district and a specific municipality. For me, says voting no to this motion.
Susan?
If the RPC sponsored looking at this, then Gibraltar wouldn't be charged, would it?
Correct. I don't know that there's ever been an occasion where the RPC has sponsored something that's just for the benefit of one town, but I don't know.
The issue of whether they have to pay the second time coming around could be taken up at a different time. That doesn't really, shouldn't impact whether you vote yes or no. Anybody else? Hugh?
I'd just like to say I agree with David.
Okay. So now, the motion on the floor is, a yes vote, we'll send it back to RPC for another ordinance coming forward. Go to your voter board.
So what do we vote, how we vote?
No, yes.
A yes vote, we'll send it back to RPC to come forward with another ordinance. A no vote will cause another vote after that to agree with the RPC denial motion.
Yep. Okay. Are we ready?
Everybody understand that? We'll go to the voter board.
Okay. Wait. I think we're voting yes, then, aren't we?
Pardon? Everybody set? If everybody, okay, go to the voter board. Cool? Not going to make a difference.
That's why we have the voter board on votes like this.
My no button doesn't work.
Okay. Joel?
Okay, that is failed by a four yes, seventeen no. Now, a motion that'd be appropriate to-
Then I'll make a motion to approve the request, or to approve the denial by the RPC.
Second.
They're going to get it handled either way.
Second by David. Is there any discussion? Wait a second, we'll go to the voter board on this one, too.
Ready?
Ready? Go to the voter board. Anybody got any questions on that, by the way? Okay, go to the voter board on this one.
No?
Yes.
Wait a minute, I'm voting yes, I'm voting yes.
That has passed on a seventeen yes, four no. We get it correct, Grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Guy can get really hungry after.
New business, it's doing no of any oral committee reports. Susan?
I want to, the legislative committee wants to give you an FYI on an issue that's come before us for two different months. You have a letter on, on your desk this morning. We were asked by a group of citizens a couple of months ago to look at the issue of Medicaid funding coming to the state of Wisconsin to support Badger Care for people who are between 100% and 133% of the federal poverty level. That reflects approximately 1,300 people in the county, which is a little more than 5% of our population. We spent a lot of time in the last two meetings, listening to folks talk about this, reading articles, reaching out for other information. I had several conversations with Wisconsin counties about this, and they sent us things. What we decided at the last meeting was to send a letter to the governor, and you'll see other representatives on there, with our concerns about this. These are people who are, under the original Affordable Care Act, were to be provided for, with money coming from the federal government, Medicaid money. And when the Supreme Court ruled on the Affordable Care Act, they allowed the states to accept it or not accept it. And so, Wisconsin decided not to accept it. The, the fear is that this is a group of people who often work multiple jobs, they're low-income, they don't have benefits, they're seasonal, and so their income fluctuates greatly between, from one month to the next, and who simply may not be able to afford insurance under the exchanges. So, what we are asking is, and this is the position of Wisconsin counties, is that the administration reconsider accepting that money. It comes at 100% funding, it can, even though we denied it once, we can still accept it at any time. It's guaranteed 100% funding for three years. After that, it's scheduled to go to 90% and less, but you can stop accepting it at any time. So after three years, if it wasn't financially feasible, Wisconsin could stop accepting that money. So we're asking that that be reconsidered. What else do I need to say? There are some states that originally decided not to, and you're going to see a link in your letter to an article about the state of Michigan, which originally denied it and now has worked and has a bipartisan bill that just went through, addressing some of the concerns on both sides of the aisle, and will accept this money under their, the plan that they came up with. And so I guess we are asking that the administration in Madison reconsideres this on behalf of the citizens who are going to lose Badger Care on January 1st because they will no longer qualify at that between 100 and 133%.
Okay.
I don't know if Dale or Kathy wants to add anything.
Any other oral committee reports? Any review of them? Ben?
Maybe just a follow-up on our museum resolution from earlier. Just a reminder to all supervisors that the museum is closing at the end of this month or, for the year. If you're interested in seeing what there is to see there, this afternoon would be a great time to go over there and check it out. But it does close the 31st.
Okay. Review the committee minutes. Anybody got any questions on any minutes?
Yeah, administration committee wasn't, wasn't posted yet.
Okay, they'll check that out and make sure they get posted.
It's probably, there's 10 days following the meeting to get them posted, so it's just a busy one.
And that meeting, that meeting was last Thursday.
Right.
So my guess is still in draft. But we'll make sure that everybody gets an email of when the unapproved minutes are ready for you to look at.
Okay. The next county board meeting is November 4th, 9:00, and December 10th at 9:00 here. We need a motion to approve that because it's different than our laws say that is. So if someone wants to make a motion, motion by Kathy?
I'll second that.
Kathy won. David is second.
I got past Mark.
Susan?
Nope.
November 4th is a Monday.
Yes.
Right.
Correct. But if it gets into a long discussion, it's gonna go to Tuesday, because we'll finish it one way or the other. What'd you say about December? December 10th is the next county board meeting, at 9 o'clock. Motion on the floor is approve those biz?
No, I had a different question.
Okay, approve those dates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I forgot the vouchers, claims, and bills. Anybody got any questions on them? If not, um, December 7th is our Christmas party at what time? You know yet?
We, we are working on that.
Working on it. December 7th is the Christmas party-
For sure.
At the Maritime Museum sometime between 5:00 and-
Maritime.
Et cetera. Ben?
What time will our meetings start in November and December?
9?
9:00?
AM. Any other questions? Motion to adjourn, I guess.
Make motion adjourn.
Seconded by Susan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.